You ready? Good evening, everyone. It's Monday, November 22nd at 6:30 PM. It's time for the Board of Selectmen meeting. The first thing we always do is we stand for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item two is our consent agenda. We have the minutes of November 8th, 2021, and then tentative meeting dates from January to June of next year. It was the board's pleasure.
Make a motion to accept a consent agenda?
Motion by Mr. Johnson.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Sigunovich. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Town administrators report. Item three.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There's a problem with my audio last time, so I want to make sure I'm speaking up clearly.
Yes.
Working for friend. Okay. Couple of items, Mr. Chairman. I want to give the board an update on the bridge, the Brandon Road Bridge project. The design and engineering is underway. Representative Durant and Fatman both worked hard to get us the funding amount to pay for the engineering and design, but they were blocked by leadership at the State House. Apparently, our request reportedly didn't contain any social justice elements, which is required for this round of funding. So that was dropped for now. So, given the importance of the bridge, it connects us to our neighbors in Webster. We're going to use Chapter 90 funds to pay for the engineering and design cost, which is, of course, reimbursable. And it was a trillion dollar, as everyone, I think, knows, federal infrastructure bill that passed last Monday. And so I'm told that there'll be a very strong likelihood that the request for just under $1 million will be looked upon more favorably when considered in the lens of the federal infrastructure bill. So that's the plan with Brandon Road Bridge. Engineering and design are actually in progress.
I was actually asked about that today.
I figured you would be.
That was a good update on that.
So that was the initial holdup was we were trying to get funding from the, at the state level, which didn't happen.
Okay.
An update on some of our projects, Mr. Chairman. The SEP solar farm, which was permitted in 2019, is planning to start construction on Oxford Ave next month. The Chase Mill Cannabis Project cultivation retail is under construction, and occupancy permit is expected in 2022. That's calendar year 2022. Stevens Mill has had its first special permitting meeting. It was about two weeks ago. Mr. Sullivan was there, Mr. Johnson was there. The special permitting hearing was continued to December 8th. So if anyone is interested in attending the special permitting hearing for the Stevens Mill, it's been continued to December 8th at the Planning Board meeting. The retail cannabis on Hall Road received its provisional license last Thursday. It will now begin moving towards a final site plan. And the final site plan on Fish Road should be completed this week and ready to present to the Planning Board sometime in January. Water and Sewer Infrastructure Funding Committee will have its first meeting on December 2nd. And I'd like to thank the committee members that took the time, especially during this busy time of year, to serve on this committee. And it's not lost on me that it's a real high time to have committee meetings, but these people did step forward, and we appreciate it. And we anticipate a report will be available to the Board of Selectmen and Water Sewer Commissioners at a meeting in February of this coming year. That's it for right now, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Thank you, Mr. Ruda. Any questions for the town administrator?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
Mr. Ruda made it very clear. I know we've been getting called on the carpet, for the want of a better term, on social media. So just to be clear, Mr. Ruda's update was from the state level, which is the authority that's going to take care of that bridge. Not the town of Dudley, not the town of Webster, not a co-op between the two towns. It's at the state level. So once again, I feel like we're forced to ask people, if you have a question, please come get the answer from selectmen, administrator, highway superintendents on top of things. Don't intentionally put things out on social media to try to get people to click on it or to make someone look bad. Please come and get the information.
Okay, anybody else?
Yep. Motion to accept the town administrator's report.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan. Seconded by Mr. Johnson. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Thank you, Jonathan. Board members, without objection, I'd like to take item five, our old business, out of order. They handled our, our police department has a lieutenant position that is going to be talked about tonight. Very rare in the town of Dudley. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. As you know, the board had declared a lieutenant's vacancy back in August of this year, and I thank you for all the support with that process. That's a position that we've had open since approximately 2005. So it's been a long time in the works to get that done. So as part of the process, we had Public Safety Consultants LLC come in, do an assessment center and exam. So they had a 80-question written exam, and they had a full-day assessment center with five different exercises. So we have four candidates that have participated in this process. It was my three sergeants, Sergeant Popowski, Sergeant Sepatelli, Sergeant Kalowitz, and Detective Nice. They all had passing scores on everything. So it was a real competitive process. Really proud of all the guys that participated in that because it's not an easy accomplishment. And it just shows the quality of individual that we have. They're all very closely scored. Had the opportunity to discuss the position with every one of them. And so I forwarded you a copy of a list. And out of that process, I would recommend that you would appoint Sergeant Kalowitz to the position of lieutenant for the police department. Merrick's been with us for quite some time. He's done very well with everything, all the assignments we've given him. He's been a sergeant since 2019. He came onboard as a sergeant. And since then, he's really done a great job. Just recently completed his master's degree at Nichols College through the terrorism program up there. I think he'll do an outstanding job with the entire process. You'll see his family is here and several members of the department as well to support him. I think it's one of these things where it'd be good to move this position forward, get the operations of the department back to where we used to be some 15, 18 years ago now. And this is certainly a good first step. So answer any questions if you have those or anything else.
Members? Jay?
Mr. Chair, I just want to thank the chief. I know you work with the town administrator, getting public safety consultants online to handle the assessment and the testing. Thank all the applicants that put in for the position. Everybody, as chief indicated, everybody scored well enough to be considered for the position. And it is a reflection on the department where everyone that put in for it could have been deemed a, or deemed a qualified applicant finalist. And I've known Sergeant Kalowitz a long time, joking with his wife on the way up. I remember his kids coming home in baby seats and Kalowitz was the same height as me almost, so as an aside. But I think Sergeant Kalowitz would be an excellent choice of lieutenant. Certainly thank everyone that participated in the process.
Okay, Stephen. Carrie, anything?
Merrick, I think you've been an excellent officer, an excellent sergeant. And if the board votes accordingly, I think you'll be an excellent lieutenant as well.
Merrick, do you want to talk about the position a little bit and why you wanted to go for it and your vision for lieutenant?
Yeah, I've been, for years, I've been always trying to advance in the department. I've lived in this town for pretty much all my life, raised my kids, my family, dedicated over 20 years to this department. And I plan on retiring with Dudley. And I believe over the last couple of years, I've gained enough experience to take on the task and move up in the leadership role at WPD.
Excellent. Do you have any questions for Merrick? Anybody?
Just you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
I think, Mr. Chairman, what I would, what I'd suggest or recommend to the board and for your consideration was make the appointment effective January 7th, coming after the 1st of the year. Because as you know, we included money in the budget at the town meeting, starting for the second half of the year. That gives the opportunity for the board administrator and everybody to sit down and work out the parameters of any agreements and things. And with the holidays and everything coming up, it just allows a little more time. So that's what I would suggest to you for your consideration.
Thank you, Chief. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Anything else? Mr. Sullivan.
I may need a little help from wording with the administrator, but the gist of it, make a motion that we appoint Sergeant Kalowitz to the position of lieutenant, effective Friday, January 7th, 2022. And I'm not sure if it's appropriate, but the language would be upon completion of an employment agreement. Mr. Administrator, is that the...
Contingent upon satisfactory terms of the promotion. Because I'm actually not sure at this point if it's an employment agreement. Specifically call it something else.
Okay. So, Michelle, if you got what the administrator said, I'll add that.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan. Seconded by Mr. Sigunovich. Discussion? I'll go. Merrick, and thank you to you for applying and everybody else who put in for it. You know, just today's a day to, for everybody to be proud of our PD. We, as chief said, we don't do this very often. It's been 16 years since we've had a lieutenant. It's time we had another one. And from here, chief, we'll work on, you know, the cascading effect of, you know, having a new sergeant and a new patrolman. You know, it just shows that, you know, public safety is still number one concern in the town. So congrats to all. Congrats to Merrick.
Thank you. If I can, I just want to thank the chief boyar and Sergeant Popowski and the board for giving me this opportunity to advance in the Dudley Police Department. I also want to thank my family, my wife, my kids. They always supported me, encouraged me throughout my career, especially my parents. My father, I'm sure, is looking down at me, smiling with a big grin. So thank you again.
Okay. Anything else?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Ruda.
The board asked that you get police departments, particularly the chief, for an independent assessment with a written and an oral assessment of, for this promotion.
You did.
And that's what you got. And Sergeant Kalowitz is, you know, appreciates the opportunity, but it was earned through that assessment. So I would bring that out.
Yeah, that's a great point, Mr. Ruda. I know it wasn't easy for you to go through that process. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Congratulations, Merrick.
Thank you.
Michelle, can I just grab a picture for...
Congratulations.
That's what I say.
Well done. Congratulations.
Why don't you have your family come up for a picture of Merrick?
You want to thank your family?
Have the camera show you? Here's the brains of the operation. Awesome.
Awesome. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys. Great job.
Thank you.
All right. Very exciting.
Does that mean when chief's on vacation, it's got to come to these meetings?
Oh.
Yes, it does.
Yes.
Something about an employment agreement? Are we going to ever put that in? All right. Thanks again, guys. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
All right. Let's head to our first, our public hearing. We have Lisa Berg, our principal assessor, is here, and she's talking about our annual tax classification hearing. And the chair will open the meeting at 6:40, 8:00 PM.
Hello.
Hi, Lisa.
I finally have an audience to do this hearing.
Audience?
Yeah.
I might have questions. Okay, so... So every year, we conduct this classification hearing. And the purpose of the classification hearing is to determine whether to distribute the tax levy equally among all classes of property or to reduce the share of the levy by the residential classes and shift some of the burden to the commercial, industrial, and personal property classes. Is that not keeping up with me?
Spin and wheel action.
You got this, John.
Revenge.
With faith in you. Ready to share.
Photographer guy. Where is that? Is it nowhere? Is that a paperwork?
There we go. Is that scrolling up, though? So the current percentages for the town right now, residential consists of 92.4% of the residential class, 2.7% is commercial, 2.3 is industrial, and 2.6 is our personal property. This button?
Otherwise, we're going to give up on it.
This never happened before.
Who is it?
Because Paul's not here.
Okay. It was a really good slideshow, too.
It was a good try.
So the next slide that you can't see is the historical class percentages. I have on here 2014 to 2022. From 2021 to 2022, you can notice in your packets. Did you get it in your packet? You do, okay. The residential stayed the same from 92.4 to 92.4. Commercial went down slightly. Industrial went down slightly, and personal property went up just a tiny bit. Currently, our top taxpayers, we have one that's over $8 million in value. That is Massachusetts Electric, which is personal property. Then we have three taxpayers that are over $4 million. That's Boston Gas, Gentex, and Hamel, which is Webco. We have five taxpayers that are over $2 million. And then we have 18 taxpayers that are over $1 million. The high taxpayers here in town, Mass Electric and Boston Gas, are obviously utility companies that are very large. Then we also have Spectrum and Verizon New England. The rest are our small businesses here in town. We have like Shields Packaging, Dudley Investments, which is Walgreens, Patriot Gas, to name a few of them. Currently, when our tax rate gets set for fiscal 2022, single-family homes will average a value of $308,378. Condos will average $133,701. Two families will be an average of $243,377, and three families will be an average of $249,740. So I did 5% increments if we shifted the burden of the taxes from residential to the commercial and industrial and personal properties. Right now, our proposed tax rate is $1191, with the average single-family home being $308,378, and the other classes $312,095. So the average single-family tax bill would be $3,0673, and the CIP would be $3,717. If we do a 1% to 5% shift from the residential to the CIP, the tax bill for single families would decrease by $16. The businesses would be increased by $187. If I go to 15%, the decrease for single-family would be $46 a year, but the businesses would be $559, an increase of $559. If I go down to the full shift that were allowed, the residential homes would save $90 a year, but the businesses would have the burden of $1,117 more in their tax bills. The next slide shows our assessed values by class. Those of you that have the packet, you can see from 2021 to 2022, things have changed slightly. Some of our general statistics. The assessment date for 2022 is January 1st, 2021. It is June 30th for new construction per Chapter 653. The Department of Revenue approved our assessments, I'm sorry, our new grow, no, our assessments on fiscal, on 11/8/2021. There are 351 towns in Massachusetts, and only 113 of these towns have a tax, a split tax rate. Dudley is the 77th lowest tax rate in Massachusetts. But of the towns without a split tax rate, it is among the lowest. The overall values, again, of single families, they did increase this year from 4% to 10% higher overall from last year. The commercial and industrial properties stayed the same. The average commercial-industrial assessment for fiscal 2022 is $2,97943. Once all the new growth was gathered for new construction, we had $11,881,909 in value, which has brought an additional revenue to the town of $146,147 since last year. The five-year history of our tax rate, this year it is proposed to be $1191. Last year, it was $1306. The year before was $1350. The year before that was $1173, and before that, $1194. Then I did a tax rate comparison on surrounding towns, Charlton, Douglas, Lester, Oxford, Southbridge, Sturbridge, and Webster. We ranked 77th in the lowest tax rate out of the 351 cities and towns. Charlton is 171, Douglas is 239, Lester is 175, Oxford 227, Southbridge 310, Sturbridge 304, and Webster 174. So you can see we are low.
Mr. Ruda.
Can I just ask Lisa, if you could just read out, because there's no visual.
Yep.
The tax rate per thousand for those towns that you have listed versus what we're proposing.
Yeah, so we're proposing $1191. Charlton is at $1501, Douglas $1672, Lester is $1513, Oxford $1653, Southbridge $1944, Sturbridge $1902, and Webster $1510. So we are very low. So in conclusion, it is the recommendation of the Board of Assessors that the Board of Selectmen vote on a residential factor of one, which will continue our historical single tax rate.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. So this is a public hearing. Does anybody have any, well, board members first, any comments for Lisa, any questions?
No, Mr. Chair, not so much that Lisa, she always puts it together where it's readable, easily to follow. Fortunately, we don't have the visual for everyone, but I'm sure they can request a copy of this. But I think the most important things we need to look at is the proposed rate. As Lisa said, it's $1191, which is down, let's scroll back down, sorry, from $1306 in 2020. I mean, we're back to the rate we had in 2017.
A little bit lower.
Yeah, 3 cents lower, actually. And again, we are at 90, was it Lisa, 92. something percent residential?
Mm-hmm, 92.4.
Right, which is our historical average, more or less. So when we have budget time and people want to know where all the money's going, first off, there's not a lot of that money to go around. And the old saying that Dudley does more with less has never been more apparent. And I understand tax bills are probably going to be higher, and people, that's what you look at, the bottom line. But the formula to get there, the tax rate has dropped significantly. And as Lisa pointed out, as I say to people, if you want to try to go somewhere else, beat the bank for the buck. Just look at the rates they're paying in other towns. So I want to thank Lisa for her presentation and the Board of Assessors for their recommendation.
Thank you, Steve. Jay?
Two things. Of course, the assessments have gone up, right? So the tax rate going down is probably a wash for most people.
With the exception of some debt that's being retired, but yes, I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
So the good news is it's stable. And we're still showing that we can be a business-friendly town. We're not putting an unfair burden on businesses and trying to bring some more in. So thank you. I think it's appropriate, your recommendation.
Thank you.
Carrie, anything?
Looking over this, I, the year-on-year, it's almost like it's the same thing every year, no offense.
It doesn't change. It doesn't change much. You know, as Jay said, the tax rate goes way up, the values go up, the tax rate goes down, and vice versa. Really, the only thing I think that changes is new construction changes, you know. We're still at 90, what did I say, 90... 92.4% residential. It doesn't really change much. I mean, you build 15 houses in town. It's not a major change in the values overall.
Well, thank you for putting this together.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
I finally have an audience, and I couldn't present it. Homer.
You know, Mr. Chair, it's...
It is online, though.
Yep, you know, the numbers bear out, too. I mean, we do have some businesses, and we appreciate every business that we have. And ought to be more business-friendly, as we state, town hall people prove day after day. But we just don't have the big corporation-type things you see in other towns. It's changing a little bit. DMA Holdings, some other businesses we have coming online. But when you look at it, a lot of these are people, and, you know, they're large property owners. But we just don't have the base that you see in other places. But again, like I said, day after day, we do more with less. We get it done.
They all said, and I'll just, I'll add, I agree with everything you guys have all said. And just Dudley remains a great value for what the town can provide, a full-service town, public safety, and school and everything that we have. So since this is a public hearing, is there anybody in the audience would like to speak on the proposed tax rate? Item, Mr. Frank?
Yeah, Jerry Frank from Costway Road. Just a clarification, if the valuations have gone up and the tax rate has gone down, that means the overall, like you said, is, you know, it's a wash. But if the, didn't you say that the valuations have gone up for the, for the houses and have stayed the same for the commercial and industrial? So what we're doing here is lowering the burden on the commercial and the industrial base, then. Is that correct? Since their valuations have not gone up and the ones on houses have gone up.
We use cost and sales, and the statistical reports we use to compare them all show that there was no change. The houses were selling $125,000 to $130,000 on the market, more than I had them assessed for. So we had to make those jumps in the single-family.
No, no, I understand. No, no, I understand, I, I just want to know, we're actually lowering the burden on commercial and industrial versus homeowners, right? On, on what they're paying. Since their tax rate has stayed the same? I mean, their tax rate has gone down and their valuation's stayed the same.
No, the, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sullivan.
I think, I think the answer is, we've never had a split rate, so anybody's property has gone down based on the rate. But the valuation, as you stated, industrials kind of stayed level, and it's, as always, or as usual, it's the property. Until you see that market level off or even come down a little bit. But we've never had a split rate. So, anybody that gets tax relief by the rate is getting it across the board.
Right, it's equal across the board.
Right.
Anybody else like to speak on this?
All these people, and you don't have any questions for me?
I don't think they're here for this one.
I know, I don't think so either.
So, the chair will close the public hearing at seven oh four P.M. What is the board's pleasure?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Sullivan.
Make a motion based on the presentation and on the recommendation of Board of Assessors to remain at a single tax rate with the one, was it Lisa, one percent? What's the official one?
Factor of one.
A factor of one.
Yeah, at a factor of one.
Chairman.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan. Second. Second by Mr. Johnson. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, unanimous.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Lisa, great job, appreciate that. Do we have to sign anything for this?
Yeah, it's coming.
Well, while it's called coming down, we will.
Now she said all of us.
We will move into.
I didn't sign his name, that was my name.
Move into new business. Uh, first, six A is establish a revolving account for compliance and inspection for water testing. Mr. Ruda.
Mr. Chairman, this is a, a, kind of being a little bit, hopefully intuitive here, that to establish an account that allows us to receive reimbursement money and then spend it out as we move down the path of compliance and regulatory considerations. It's pretty self-explanatory what it's needed for.
Okay, and is this, you need a vote from us tonight on that?
Correct, and then it will be ratified at.
Prior to town meeting?
Yeah.
All right. Board members?
I'm just scrolling back up, sorry. Make a motion to establish revolving account for compliance and inspection of water testing.
Motion by Mr. Sullivan.
Sorry.
Second by Mr. Johnson, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, unanimous. So, that will go to town meeting. Thank you, Mr. Ruda.
Thank you.
All right, item six A, betterment bylaw. We have a lot of people here very interested, a bunch of residents who live on private roads got letters from the town to sort of talk about the betterment bylaw that we've had on the books for several years. And the town administrator thought it would be good to give an high-level overview of what it is as a vehicle to help with the private roads and maintaining those and working them towards being accepted. Mr. Ruda.
Mr. Chairman, just before we start, if there's no objection, I'd like to limit this segment to twenty, twenty-five minutes, something like that. Although, because with, like you said, Mr. Chairman, this is intended to be a high-level overview of the betterment program and some initial steps that people who are interested in pursuing a betterment should be looking into, as opposed to getting into every individual issue on every private road.
As long as everybody feels heard, then that's good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, as the board recalls prior to the.
Hold on, Jay, hold on.
I'm sorry.
Will there be a forum for future discussion?
I think as we move into, there's definitely a public hearing before a street is, a private way is accepted. So, every individual project will receive a, a public hearing.
All right, sorry, go ahead.
As a, as a matter of fact, this requires town meeting approval as well, so it'll be several private hearings.
Public hearings?
Public hearings. Mr. Chairman, as the board recalls prior to the COVID shutdown, Michelle sent out letters to residents of private roads in town and then included a copy of the road betterment bylaw, which is Article Five, subsection two fifty-seven dash twenty. The purpose of the meeting was to address the numerous inquiries that were being made relative to the process of town acceptance of private roads. I did not receive much of a response, and then, of course, the pandemic hit. I had the chance to meet with a few people, a few individual residents privately, but there was certainly not enough of a response to have that meeting go forward. But as we came out of the pandemic, the inquiries began again. And many of the, many of them were made by, from what I understand, constituents directly to the Board of Selectmen. So, I thought the best way to at least provide some initial information, solicit some feedback, would be at a meeting of the Board of Selectmen, which is why we're here tonight. This way, we have everyone in the same room, including our highway superintendent, the highway commissioners, and so forth. So, first, I have two basic points to make in terms of talking about a two-hundred-foot overview. The first point is that the road betterment bylaw is fairly simple. The first step requires residents of private roads that are like-minded and interested in having their private roads accepted through the road betterment bylaw to form a group of neighbors that account for fifty percent of the cumulative linear footage of the private road. Next, they need to sign a petition to the Board of Selectmen, who are also the highway commissioners, representing that they meet the requirement and accompany that by certification that they own the property. So, the first step is to make sure that you have fifty percent of your neighbors that equal that, that threshold to sign a petition, and then show owner, and then the second step is to show ownership of those properties along the road. Now, it sounds fairly easy to this point. Once that's undertaken, the Board of Selectmen shall determine the scope of the repairs and the extent of, to which the grating, surfacing, paving, drainage, et cetera, should be undertaken. The highway superintendent plays a critical role in providing this information and the recommendation to the board. And finally, the cost of repairs and any associated borrowing is undertaken pursuant to Mass General Law's Chapter forty-four in a portion among the property owners of the street. And the assessors are authorized to set the number of years to pay it back through property taxes up to twenty-five years in the form of a betterment to the property owners. So, step one is to, to make sure you have a group on your street that's interested cumulatively in pursuing the betterment bylaw. The next step is to, is to, is to sign a petition. The third step is to show ownership of the road, and then we take it to the Board of Selectmen. Now, it's still seems pretty easy. But the following step is that, in order for the private roads to be accepted, it has to go to a town meeting and be approved. And in order for it to be approved, it has to meet the criteria in our bylaws for acceptance. So, where the Board of Selectmen do have some discretion, it's very limited, because it still has to meet the threshold of being accepted as a private road. So, it sounds simple, and that's a mouthful, but do you have any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Um, I know where, when we put, put this in several years ago was to give, give everybody a way to actually do this on, like, subdivisions in roads where the developer has gone belly-up or just was let off the hook for whatever reason. And it's, it's something that the residents can look at if they choose to do that. Board members?
Um, yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I think partly historically, and some of these folks probably know better than I do, a lot of these streets have been around for a great number of years. And I believe it was somewhere in the mid-nineties, I think Mr. Frank was on the planning board, but I know the Board of Selectmen at one time took a vote way back not to maintain new private roads. But some of these private roads had been getting at least minimal town services, plowing, et cetera. For example, I know Patridge Hill, that we have, I don't know if you folks have the handout, but it says a thousand eighty-five feet private, and I think the issue there is, and my numbers may be slightly off, but I think, like, the first nine hundred is town-accepted. And then it was allowed to be completed to a cul-de-sac, which was never accepted by the town. But I believe the highway superintendent, can you correct me? I believe that for that example, the town goes up, plows it, comes back out, because you can't back the plow up. So, I think the intent of the betterment, it's got good intentions, and I'm glad there's a good turnout tonight, because there's going to be a lot of discussion. And as the administrator said, we're not trying to solve everything tonight. It's a, it's a big overview to give the folks the basic framework moving forward, what they would need, what we would need somehow come to a consensus. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks. You know, tip, one, one thing you said, Sullivan, is like, you know, we, we, the town does plow in many cases, because that, just to remind everybody, that falls under public safety, you know, we need to make sure an ambulance can get up and, and so forth. So, that's why, that's why we do that. Other towns don't always do that. You guys have anything? Are we?
No, I'd rather give my time to the people sitting here if they have questions.
Yeah, no, I'd, I'd appreciate a common sense path for these streets to be accepted, knowing full well that there's a, you know, a historical set of issues behind why they weren't accepted. And, you know, that's not, that's well documented, let's say. Or not well documented, which is probably the other problem.
That was then, this is now, what's the path forward?
This is, this is what we, this is what we have. We need a path forward for this, because I believe a number of people obviously want the same benefits as, as the other streets that are already public.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's a, that's an important, you know, the second most important point made here tonight is it's important for residents, a group of residents that form and come up with, come forward with a, with a petition to determine if the betterments are in fact made, that the private road can be in fact eligible to be accepted as a public road, as a public way. It's not up to the Board of Selectmen to make that final decision. It's up to town meeting voters to make that final decision. In order to get that onto the warrant, they have to meet a certain list of criteria, which is established under the bylaws. So, we would hate to have people go to the point of, of getting the petition rolling and so forth, and then they come in and there's just no path forward. So, it's important to kind of make that part of the process, is to take an independent look at your own private road and make sure that, under our bylaws, which are pretty explicit, these roads can actually indeed legally be, be accepted as, as public ways.
Makes sense.
Unfortunately, that's the only path forward for us in terms of accepting private streets as public ways. It's all spelled out clearly in the bylaws.
Thank you. Um, anybody like to discuss on this? Mr. Donahue?
Here or here?
Come up to the table. Get your name and, uh, address for the record, please.
Great.
Do you want me to speak first? Okay. Good evening. Nadine, Nadine Donahue, five Misty Meadow Lane in Dudley. Um, I did receive the letter, the betterment letter, and, um, before I could really understand, and I, I know you, you gave a, a great description just now, but I really needed to understand what was the definition of a private road. For those of you up here who may not know the neighborhood, Misty Meadow Lane and Henry Marsh Road are parallel to each other. They both extend into Oxford with the same name. On the side of these two roads closest to the Oxford line are connected in Dudley by Overlook Drive, which is about a tenth of a mile long. Overlook Drive is parallel to both town lines. So, um, my property in particular is opposite Overlook Drive on Misty Meadow. So, regarding the definition of a, of a, of a private road, I read through the town bylaws regarding streets. I could not find an, an absolute definition of what is considered a private road. I did speak to the town clerk on Friday, and she had stated that the town of Dudley does not have a formal written definition of what a private road is. So, I did my own research, and I found a detailed definition on a website called Legal Information Institute, and it's managed by Cornell Law School. So, what, what this definition that I came across regarding a private road states that "A private road is a road on private property limited to the use of the owner or group of owners who share the use and maintain the road without help in maintaining the road from the town, city, county, or state." It goes on to say that "In an opinion of the Massachusetts Supreme Court justices to the Massachusetts Senate, the justices, in summarizing the common law of private ways, defined private roads as," and I quote, "ways for travel not laid out by public authority or dedicated to public use that are wholly the subject of private ownership, either by reason of the ownership of the land upon which they are laid out by the owner thereof." The justices also noted that such roads may be terminated at any time at the will of the owner. Before I continue reading that definition, contrary to this particular definition, the use of Misty Meadow Lane is not limited to the residents of this street. It is not marked by signage as a private road. I have no authority, I am told, to terminate the use of this road. I did not own this land before there was a layout of the road prior to its implementation. I did not seek, um, I did not seek permit or contract with the town to implement this road. Continuing, the Massachusetts Appeal Court in nineteen seventy-nine, Cowles versus Wojkowski, summarized private roads a bit more simply, stating that if, and I quote, "If a road has never been dedicated and accepted," and I understand that's the town's stance, "has never been dedicated or accepted, laid out by public authority, or," not and, but or, "established by prescription, such a road is private." So, naturally, I needed to look up the definition of what is meant by establishment by prescription. And in Massachusetts, establishment, established by prescription is when someone uses land in Massachusetts in a manner that is opened, notorious, not with the permission of the owner, and continuous for a period of at least twenty years. So, town records, I did research, indicate that the road permit was established in, for Misty Meadow in nineteen eighty-six. That was over thirty-five years ago at this point, and for at least twenty-five years of this time, from the time I purchased my home in twenty-eleven. So, I purchased my home in twenty-eleven, this road was already in place for twenty-five years. Misty Meadow Lane is freely used by the public for travel. The highway department uses it as a detour when Dudley-Oxford Road is not passable due to a tree down, an accident, utility work. The street has been maintained to the extent that is plowed in the winter by both Dudley and partly by Oxford on Dudley Road. Annually, ten feet of the overgrowth on private property is cleared on either side of the road, especially where Misty Meadow takes a ninety-degree turn. And the street sweeper has made passes through as well. So, when I acquire, inquire about this, if this is truly a private road, and a private road is not maintained in any way, shape, or form by the town, this kind of falls under a maintenance and a safety issue. So, I, that's what I'm told, it's a safety issue for travel on this road. So, you know, I understand you just mentioned, someone just mentioned that the, 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 these bylaws were established for private load, roads, but what was the date of that? And it's, the situation to me seems to be grandfathered from whatever new rules the town has in place. So, and then when I read the town's betterment, you know, part of the, the letter that was just sent, the betterment assessment states benefited property owners shall be those who utilize repaired, improved roads to access their property. So, there are more people who use that road than the people who live on that road. And it's been in place for, since nineteen eighty-six. I, I didn't request the road to be put. But in, in my very strong research here, Misty Meadow Lane does not fit the description of a private road.
So you mentioned, I'm Derek Donahue, also 5 Misty Meadow Lane. You mentioned in the meeting, in the invitation letter for this evening, the opportunity to discuss these unique circumstances.
Can't hear you, Derek.
Oh, sorry. So, you know, like Nadine mentioned, our unique circumstances happen to be that we live on the Oxford-Dudley town line, and the road is not exclusive to us. So again, you know, per that definition that Nadine just read, we are not a private road. She did reiterate that, said, did state that Dudley reroutes traffic down there during emergencies. Oxford happens to use a 100-foot section of Misty Meadow along our property at least four times a day for their school buses and their postal service as a means to return into Oxford via Overlook and back onto Henry Marsh. They plow Overlook and this section on Misty Meadow as well, which is contributing to its demise. This 100-foot section of Misty Meadow Lane is riddled with potholes, one of which is at least eight feet in diameter and at least one to two feet deep. All the potholes are filled with water and are therefore disguised to those that are not familiar with the area. Again, if the town of Dudley is concerned about public safety, as was stated, you know, even earlier with the, with the lieutenant, you know, and you clear 10 feet of overgrowth on all the undeveloped private property, and you plow at least one path and even street sweep, why are these potholes not also an urgent priority? There is no private road sign, and there are no street lights on Misty Meadow Lane. Pedestrians use that road throughout the day and run the risk of injury. Halloween, the entire street was pitch black. Families and children can't see where they're going, and somebody's going to stumble and hurt themselves. I would like to know who is liable for when, not if, when someone is injured. There will come a time when a vehicle or a motorcyclist hits one of these potholes and gets injured or worse dies. Again, I'd like to know who is liable.
You got any answer to that?
Again, we're not here to discuss who's liable because there's so many different circumstances that occur on private roads. We're here to define what a public road is according to the town of Dudley and how to get it accepted. I don't disagree with the definition of what a private road is, and that it's not covered in our bylaws, but we clearly cover what is a public road and, and, and we're able, what we're able to maintain on a continuing basis. Mr. Chairman, I recall a few years ago, Paul Lane Circle Drive, when we do the plowing there, there was also a block party or something that I believe we debated back and forth as to whether or not the private road could be closed down, and the answer was yes. We went ahead and closed it down so that they could have a block party, and it's their private road. They can do that. The reason that we generally leave it open and provide minimum maintenance, unfortunately, it's gotten to this point, is exactly for public safety reasons. So, I don't disagree with the Donahues at all in terms of the lack of definition with a private road. But we clearly define what a public road is.
Well, if you don't mind, I mean, if the town, going back to the liability, if the town is liable, then in my mind, it's not a private road, and that should, therefore it should be managed and overtaken by the town. If we are liable, and by we, I mean ourselves and the neighbors across the street, then you are effectively telling me that it's a private road, and therefore, I can block and barricade that 100-foot section for public safety reasons and for our own liability.
We're, we're just at the point where we just don't know what to do. It is that bad. I mean, who, who is responsible? For if, if someone is injured and property damage, these motorcyclists who might be coming through at night, they cannot see these potholes.
So on this, the Oxford part is very interesting to me, because they, if they're plowing, and you're right on the, on the line, is, again, these are all special circumstances. Is there any way, Mr. Town Administrator, that maybe the highway superintendent can talk to Oxford's highway superintendent to see if there's something, since they're the one digging it up with their plow, can they patch the holes or something?
I've spoken.
They've, they've denied, they've denied that they plow.
They denied they plowed, and they said they can't rationalize using taxpayer money to fix another town.
Well, maybe, maybe a, a sit-down with the appropriate people.
But, I mean, if, if we are liable, we want to block that section of the road and stop people from driving on it. And this is what we need to know.
And if you tell us that we can't, then it tells me it's a public road.
Mr. Sullivan?
So, it's not a one-size-fits-all, as Mr. Ruda said, and we all, we know folks like you that live on these private roads, and we want to get to a better place, but just a couple of quick things, and I don't have the dates, Mr. Donahue, and I'm, I'm going off of memory, which sometimes isn't that good. I know the board under the OSMIS is, I think it's under Chapter 90, we took a vote years ago, I think I'm, Paul not being here, I think I was the only one on the board at the time, so we're probably going back 12, 15 years, where we, and again, the language is probably off, and I apologize. We adopted the statute which gives us permission to do light maintenance, safety, like you said, the brush cutting, plowing for services. And I'm, I'm sure we can find that vote. Town clerk can either find it, Michelle will research it, and we can give you the exact path which got us to that vote. I honestly don't remember the vote, but your, your point about blocking the road, we had an issue, again, when I was on the board, private road was intersecting another private road owned by different owners, and one of the private road person literally started putting pillars in the road to prevent people from coming from the other private development. And the police department went out at the time, I'm sure Chief was around at the time, maybe, might have been Chief, but we ended up getting a legal opinion. They could not do that. They could not, for, for the exact reason you, you would want to do it, to restrict access. The answer was, well, what if somebody doesn't know those pillars are there, and they come down and they hit them? So they weren't allowed to block their private way. So, again, I, I know it's probably not what you want to hear at this point.
Well, the other thing I'd like to just raise is the fact that, and Mr. Ruda, you and I had a discussion about a year ago, when you said that council advised that the town should not spot repair the road. Our builder told me that he deposited what he was required to do when all the properties closed. If I recall, it was 5,000 per property, and to that end, there should be at least 25,000 in the escrow account. And at our last discussion, you said there was only 11,000. So I'd like to ask some specific questions. Number one, what was the value of that escrow at its maximum? What have the funds in that account been used for? And if the funds have ever been used for the improvement of the road or its drainage, then how is that possible if the road is considered private? And finally, why is this betterment the only means to complete Misty Meadow, or at least fix the 100-foot stretch? The rest of the road is in pretty good shape. If we pay the same tax rate as a resident on a private road, why can't a percentage of our current taxes be used as a means to fund the existing escrow account? Why are we being asked to pay additional taxes when the taxes we pay now should be utilized in some capacity?
Mr. Sullivan?
I don't, I don't speak for the planning board or the treasurer, I think the $5,000 you referenced is the fee a developer is supposed, is to put up for engineering costs. So I think if you go to the treasurer, like, like our engineer reviews your builder's plans, where they site the house, where they put their drainage, where the septic went, where the well went. I believe that's what the 5,000 is. It's a surety for each lot to cover engineering costs. So I, I would think you're going to find any monies that was expended was to pay for engineering costs. But there is, you're right, in a way, there, there should be, or there should have been, a bond put up for the road.
There wasn't 86.
Right, so, again, I don't, I don't claim to speak for the planning board, and I probably shouldn't even say anything. When I was on the planning board, generally what happens is they get like a two-year, they call it a covenant. I'm going to do this much work to get my project completed, and if, and Harvey Superintendent's here, and just for argument's sake, round numbers, say it's a $100,000 bond they make them put up, but that money is, that's a separate bond, I believe, than the 5,000 you're talking. The monies for that are supposed to be a surety to finish the project if the developer doesn't finish it. So when the, when the, when the covenant is coming to expire, the developer usually comes back to the town and says, "I, I got eight more houses to build, I'm making up a number." And they say, "Okay, we're going to send the engineer," and he might say, "Okay, you need 150,000 now, cost has gone up." So that bond is supposed to be adequate to ensure completion. I can't speak what happened in 86 or 90, when the, you know, whenever, whenever the covenants were renewed, but generally, that's what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to put enough monies up to ensure the projects finish if they can't finish it. And, and then to go back to the beginning, when Mrs. Donahue was speaking, there's a form that every developer has to fill out as they go along, get signed off, like the engineer goes out and reviews base coat, drainage if necessary, sidewalks, berms, and as it goes, it gets checked, as it goes down and down and down, till you get to the final, gets to the bottom, they say, "Okay, top coat, which is the finish coat, the road's, road is ready for acceptance." But as Mr. Ruda stated, even then, you still have to go to town meeting to get it passed. So I, I don't, I'm not a lawyer, and I pretend to play one. Your, your definitions is probably right. I mean, the court cases are probably valid, but I think the town's position is, is that, I think it's a Form H, is what it's called, right, Jeff? Form H that they have to check off?
Form.
Form H for roads like in a, in a subdivision?
Yes.
So that, that's the town's mechanism to make sure the work's getting done. And we ran into, you know, we ran into incidents where, like your developer, I can remember, I remember the guy's name, I don't want to, I can probably say it's public record, his name was Dan Duran.
No.
No.
At one time he was. He owned that project, because he came before us.
It was, in 1986, was under a different name.
Yeah, yeah, he took it over after, I think he bought it like at an auction or something. He came before us, and I was on the planning board, and he's like, "Like, there's money there, but I don't know what I'm going to do, and his covenant expired, and our only recourse is if there is bond money left to try to do the work." So that'd be a question for the treasurer, the custodian of the bonds. But the mechanisms the town have is that Form H, which is supposed to ensure every step is completed, and I'm, I'm sure you're, you're.
Who's the onus, who's on, who's the onus on that to follow that through and make sure that that's completed?
Developer. Developer, if he wants to continue to build, he's supposed to go to the planning board and get that covenant. If his covenant expired to extend, he has to be current on what is, what he's obligated to do.
I, I have a question regarding, you know, this covenant, and I, I couldn't find anything on the town's website, but Derek and I and, and all the other residents of Misty Meadow, and probably same case in, in all these other roads in town where the builder maybe disappeared. What I don't understand is, when I purchased my house, I, I didn't sign any agreement with the town that states if my builder doesn't finish the road, then, then I am obligated. So I, I didn't find any written documentation that states that the homeowner, because I didn't own the land before, when the road went in, right? It wasn't like I, I went to the town to say, "I own this property, I need access to it." I had no contract with the town, no agreement with the town that stated if the agreement you had with the builder, the town of Dudley, excuse me, had with the builder goes belly up and doesn't finish the road, then that responsibility is put on the homeowners. I really, I just haven't really had time understanding that.
We didn't, we didn't buy the house and get into this community to own the street.
I didn't own the land, we didn't own the land before the house was built. So I didn't, I didn't have a contract with the town to say that I am responsible for this road should the builder disappear. So I have a hard time understanding that whole concept.
And again, our big issue is that 100-foot stretch. Somebody's going to die.
Let's, 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 let's focus on that, because that's more solvable than everything else. I would like, I would like to see the town administrator and the highway superintendent talk to Oxford to see if there's anything we do in the interest of trying to do more with less like we do in Dudley.
Oh, God forbid an ambulance goes through that.
Right? It can't hurt to have an official discussion. If they're the ones digging it up, the plow, like you said, you know.
You know, a perfect example is, you know, our builder went up, went belly up. We closed on the house, and several of the subcontractors were not paid. They attempted to put a lien on our home, and they were unsuccessful because they did not have an agreement with us.
We didn't have a contract with the subcontractors, so they were not successful in placing a lien on our house. We didn't have an agreement with them.
And I take that same approach with this road. Okay?
Okay.
I just think it's very, it's unreasonable, given the history of this road, how long it's been there. It's a public, it's, it's not as if this road is only for the residents. It's not like a situation like Pierpont Estates or Tobin Estates. It is a throughway, and it has been used as such when Dudley-Oxford is not passable. I think it's unreasonable to ask for the residents, the residents of Misty Meadow and Overlook to pay.
And when you see a school bus from Oxford go up and down that and hit those potholes and almost.
Four times a day.
Four times a day, tip over.
Post office.
It's really aggravating.
Plow trucks, plow trucks, it's, they push all of that snow right into my yard with all the road debris. I'm not even complaining about that, but.
Understood, guys.
It's been a problem for 10 years, and, and it's at the point now where this is a seriously dangerous situation.
So, Jeff and Jonathan, please meet on to see if there's, there's an Oxford angle on that. Thank you, Donahue.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank was up.
Jerry Frank from Causeway Road. So, my first question is regarding this letter. It says that you're looking to make permanent repairs on private ways and roads. So, is this, I didn't know that the final step in this was to have the road accepted. Is that the only route we're talking about here? Or are we talking about just having the road repaired and, and remain private?
No, the final step would be road acceptance.
So if we're not looking for road acceptance, this whole thing doesn't apply to us? Is that correct?
That's what the, that's through the chairman, that's what the betterment program is. It represents a pathway forward to have the road accepted as a public way.
Okay. Because that's not really, but this, my, my next, I've got a bunch of questions, but I guess they almost, some of them aren't really important, but regarding the, the linear footage in the properties that are budding, in this particular instance, the town of Dudley owns a big part, a, a big part of the, the frontage on this, on Causeway Road. So would that, does that be counted, or is there, because there's no house on it, it's conservation land, is that not counted towards the, the initial vote and also towards paying for the betterment? Does the town?
So, when public ownership would, would not be counted, it's private ownership that's counted.
Okay. And then my next question is, is there's a lot of people, you know, we've, it's, it's really a, you know, this road was put in, Causeway Road and Kruger Island Road were put in as just little summer cottages, so there's a lot of tiny little lots, and there are times where there are three lots that have budged, budged each other, which are owned by the same person. Would they, their, so their frontage, you know, becomes one, but in terms of the number of lots that are assessed for the betterment, do you count them as three different people or one person? If they own three lots, sometimes they're budding, and some people own like two or three lots that do not abut each other.
It's the cumulative amount of ownership. It doesn't have to, they don't have to abut each other. It's cumulative.
Including for the betterment, for, for paying the betterment?
Correct.
Okay. Wow, you're answering a lot of questions here. This is great. And also, it's, it said something about having access to the property count. So some of, some of these properties are strictly recreational, there's no house on them, you know, because it's waterfront property, so sometimes it's, somebody owns a lot and they just maybe come down like two, three times a year to go ice fishing or something. Were those lots included also?
Yes.
Okay. And then I have one question, which I don't think you'll be able to answer right now, but I just want to bring it up, is that the town assessor's map shows the road in a different place than where it actually is. So, because the road has moved over the years, because when the town actually did pave one of, one of the roads at one point, so the, the other road had to move because of that? So, and, and the town won't plow the new road, so it doesn't get plowed at all, and it's not usable, but it makes a difference when you're counting the, the footage, the frontage on the, you know, who owns the frontage on the road. On the town map, it shows a different road than is actually there. So would that be something that, how do we deal with that?
Well, I, I don't want to answer the question incorrectly, but I would assume that it would go by the assessor's map as it's laid out in terms of the frontage, an accumulative amount of frontage. If the, if that's what the assessors have, that would be the map that we would go by. That's my assumption. I don't want to give you the wrong answer.
Yeah. Okay, I think you've answered most, oh, and I've got one other, one other question. Causeway, Kruger Island Road is off of Causeway Road. Now, Causeway Road on the assessor's map is shown entirely on private property, so it's on some, you know, on a piece of private property. Kruger Island is shown. Yeah, okay, I think you've answered most, oh, and I've got one other, one other question. Causeway, Kruger Island Road is off of Causeway Road. Now, Causeway Road on the assessor's map is shown entirely on private property. So it's on some, you know, on a piece of private property. Kruger Island is shown as other roads are in town with properties on both sides and the property line goes up to the road. So nobody owns the road there. So wouldn't that mean that the town owns that road or who owns that road on Kruger Island Road?
All right. So, well, I don't know if you're answering the same question that he's asking, Mr. Chairman specifically. But I know that ownership, we've determined, we've got an illegal opinion that we've determined that ownership on a private road goes to the center of the road on either side.
Yeah, that's what I was-
Okay. And I think my next question is, again, just an opinion question, is on a road like Kruger Island Road, which is very small, it's a dirt road and the properties are very small. I mean, I think that if you tried to better the road to beyond, you know, ten feet wide, you'd be encroaching on people's wells and their septic systems and stuff like that. I mean, it's just a very small thing. Is that kind of like say it's not gonna happen there? Because there's no way you can bring it up to the town stand. I think the town requires the road right away to be forty feet wide, I think, is with the, I'm not sure what the zoning requirements are, but I think it's forty, about forty feet. It's just totally impossible to get forty feet without like putting the road through people's living rooms. So does that mean that those people, people who are in that situation shouldn't even bother with this or? And I've got one more question after that.
I have to rooter then, Mr. Sullivan.
So my recommendation to Mr. Frank would be to reach out to the planner or the highway superintendent for those specific questions. I don't want to rule anything in or out for the purposes of this meeting, you know, say that absolutely not, it can never be done. Because I don't think we're here for that, Mr. Chairman. I think we're here to try to find a pathway forward for people.
Right, I just want everybody to feel heard. Mr. Sullivan?
I think what Mr. Frank's referencing, and again, I don't have the zoning book in front of me. The new zoning bylaw affords a certain amount of taking, it's called. Pavement is different than taking. The road you hope is centered in the taking. Like if you look at some of the old maps, you'll see roads, like Mesa Road, for example. It's not the fifty-foot wide taking, which is nowadays, maybe you look at some of these old maps, the old county maps, like there'll be like thirty feet taking or twenty-five feet taking. Now that does, once again, doesn't mean the road's twenty-five feet wide. The road might only be fifteen feet and the town would own, if it centered properly, five feet on each side. For example, the road could be shifted as long as within that taking. But I think the new zoning regulations, which were probably adopted again in the nineties, I believe it was a fifty-foot, because the pavement at the time was supposed to be thirty. There was supposed to be a glass, grass strip.
Yep.
Sidewalks, then grass again, which gives the town the ability to maintain, come in on both sides and maintain the sidewalk. That's why some subdivisions have two sidewalks, some have one. But that's when things get a little confusing, just because your road is eighteen feet wide, we'll say. That the actual layout that was accepted in Kruger Island was probably in the forties, might have been thirty feet, twenty-five feet. You'd be able to find it on an assessor's map. It should tell you how wide, for example, Kruger Island was. And it'd be different than Pierpont Estates, only because it's newer.
Okay.
So I think that's the issue with, you understand the taking.
Yep, I have one more question. So this is real quick here. You said there were step one, step two, step three, and then it goes to the selectmen to recommend it for town meeting and to be accepted. But in between there, once you do step one where there's the petition, step two is the work is decided and how much it's gonna cost. But do the town, do the people who live on the road get to vote a second time on whether they want to follow through on this after they've seen the scope of the work and the cost? In other words, is there a second vote where you need fifty percent of the linear fee after that we've heard what it's gonna cost? After the highway department has come down and said, we've got to do this amount of drainage and?
So through the chair, it's by petition. So the petition could be withdrawn and the article could certainly be withdrawn. There's no, I don't think you're under any obligation to go ahead and, if the cost is prohibitive, to go ahead and put that on for a town, town meeting vote.
But, okay, but there is a process where we can withdraw the petition, is there? I mean, what if sixty percent of the people originally vote to have this, to start this process and then thirty percent, half these people change their mind afterwards? How, what would be the process for them to, can they re?
I don't see anything that prohibits withdrawing the petition. I don't, there's nothing that specifically says when or how you can withdraw it, but there's nothing that prohibits it. I would suggest that if the work has begun, then it's way too late. But the work won't begin until it's voted upon and there'll be no assessment of betterment charged until the work is complete. So I think there's plenty of time, Mr. Chairman, to change, for people to change their minds before you get to that point.
And they would be, you would allow that to happen?
Sure.
It'd be non-binding, I guess, is what you're asking.
Yeah, so it's non-binding, the original vote would be non-binding.
Right, if sixty percent said yes and the bill came in astronomical and forty-nine or whatever, you know, eleven said no.
Yeah, that step wasn't mentioned and you said all the steps that was gonna go through. There was no, that step wasn't there, I just wanted to make sure that that step exists.
I think it's non-binding till, I mean, we'd have to tighten it up.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Frank. Mr. Bateman was next, then over here.
Thank you. My name is Ellis Bateman. I live at thirty-four Piastor Road. I own land at, on Misty Meadow. And I'll make this very short and sleek. The town never should have issued permits on others. We wouldn't be here today. The town wouldn't issue a building permit to give a personal occupants. If they had the money in escrow, we wouldn't be here today. And why did the town wait so long to bring this up? They should have been done ten, fifteen years ago. Anyone got an answer? Why did we put this off until now?
I wasn't here ten, fifteen years ago.
Oh, you're right, I'm sorry, I don't mean to yell at you, but-
Oh, it's okay.
Gentlemen.
Got two years under my belt, we're working on it now, apparently.
But this, some of this, they give these, some of these people have been living here for twenty years and they, by right, had no business living there because they shouldn't have got an occupants. Think about it, the town is guilty on this. I don't care how you look at it, the town of Dudley is guilty.
The office has agreed.
I don't, what's your, Mr., what's your point of view?
Well, my point of view is that, you know, this is, we knew it was an issue, so this is why we tried-
It's a serious issue.
Bring forward some of these tools to at least some, there's actually ways to get some of the roads fixed. We thought, we definitely knew that it was an issue.
And these people are living in these places and they're actually paying too much taxes because they're not getting their tax money because the road isn't in.
It's an issue.
I think, I'm sorry.
Sorry, I would submit though, and this isn't a cop-out of me, we're trying to work with everybody. The board of-
This goes back to the eighties.
But the board of-
I'm talking on Misty Meadow up there.
But the board of selectmen didn't-
Thirty years ago, twenty-
The board of selectmen didn't, the board of selectmen didn't issue any occupancy permits.
It comes to the building, I realize that. I was wire inspector at this time.
Yeah, for a long time you were.
And I can tell you a lot that was going on that I kept it confidential.
You did a couple of my houses.
Back in the eighties, I was wire inspector.
Right, but so you would understand then, whatever the process at the time.
What I'm trying to say, these people never should have got a occupants permit to live in a place because the road wasn't up to snuff.
Yeah, but then, but, I mean, Bill Scanlon's here, the devil's advocate would be then you're saying, again, we don't have control over that, but we're-
I know, I'm not saying the selectmen.
No, no, but I'm saying-
When I said the town is, there's guilt there.
There's plenty of blame to go around, but, so there's plenty of blame. But so what you're saying is we, nobody should be moving in till the road's done, so that means?
Yeah, but I could talk ten, twenty minutes on this. I've said enough already, I ain't gonna say anymore.
We appreciate you here, you've got the best perspective in the room, you've been involved the longest.
I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Bateman, appreciate it.
Just to make sure we stay on target of what we're here for, we were here to establish a procedure or to have it explained to us as to how people who are on private roads could go about in having an alternative to have their problems resolved. So if we can stick to that format a little bit and maybe one of the things the selectmen might want to consider is a committee, which would be comprised of naturally the highway superintendent, who knows the roads better than any of us, what needs to comply. Maybe someone from the planning board and some people from the public to serve on reviewing once you determine what areas want to submit plans. We have an issue that came about from probably two things. One, older roads that existed that were dirt roads that served property and were not, we did not have a standard for roads at that time. Subdivision control laws came about in nineteen sixty-nine and the builders were given an alternative. They could post a bond, they did not have to put up money. That's why we have properties that have that issue. It wasn't until probably fifteen years later that they were required to actually post a bond, not just a covenant that said, I will put in the roads, like when the ones up on Dresser Hill were done. And they held back a thousand from each one, which would never cover the cost, the banks did that. It wasn't until our subdivision control laws became firmer and they stopped being allowed to post a covenant that says, I promise I'll do it and had to put up money or bonds. So we have a series of issues that have come about and we have to deal with them. So in essence, even places like Misty Meadows were not private roads, they were part of subdivisions and they came under subdivision control. And you can name five of those developments that we're living with, along with some of these country roads that are like on Cottage Road or Norman Lane or all of those, that those people now live with the situation, they'd like to see improved. Then they're looking to you, who said, we have a possible solution. And what you've said, from what I saw in the letter, was that if the residents get together, they submit a request and there are fifty percent of them, you will at least look at what pricing out, what kind of road might be in compliance, not maybe necessarily a road of today's standards that would meet what was there at the time and might be able to comply. But you can't give us cost yet, you can't do anything until we start the process, if I understand this correctly.
That's right.
Okay, so that's all I have to say. Hopefully we can stay on track because we can digress. And maybe we need to have people who serve on a committee and give some input and hear it firsthand. Because our key people are always the highway superintendent who lives with us, your planning boards, and the selectmen who approve. But you guys don't put in the road.
Right, thank you, John. Yeah, and I knew the first, I, my style as chair is to let people talk and be heard. And I knew the first few people would ask a lot of the questions everybody had, so that's why we've sort of done it that way.
Mr. Chairman, the next speaker is coming up. I think it's important to recognize what Mr. Sigenovich said. Mr. Johnson and Mr. Sigenovich were not on at the time, but they're now trying to resolve the issue. The two people, well, actually the three, but the two that are still members of the board voted to pass this betterment bylaw in twenty sixteen in order to figure a path forward. And we've been working through that, you know, since then. So there's a lot of blame to go around, but that's not why we're here tonight. We're here to resolve issues.
No, I know, the people just want to, want to be heard and learn more about it.
Elizabeth Coakley, twenty-seven Partridge Hill Road. First of all, I want to thank Mr. Ruder and the selectmen for finally getting this rolling and getting us all together for it. We have spoken to our neighbors and owners on the private end of Partridge Hill Road and believe most of us support enrolling in the road betterment program. The residents all have many questions and reservations that they look forward to hearing the town respond to and learning about this process as we go forward. We believe at this time, where the town and the private road meet, something really needs to be done in the near future before more deterioration takes place. If you go up there, you're gonna lose not only your tire, your eye teeth. The lots on the private end of the road are mainly owned by young families or senior citizens. Including the road in the program would increase public safety and minimize the risk of accidents. The private end of Partridge Hill Road is only about a quarter of a mile, I think. I didn't go out with a measure, but about that. And would be, in my mind, relatively simple to maintain. The betterment program was created for situations like this and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. We look forward to the town keeping us informed of future developments on it and answering questions we might have as the betterment process goes forward. I, so now listening to the beginning when Mr. Ruder was talking, so does the town have like forms for this? You were talking about step one, step two?
They have forms that they'll be able to-
Do you have a formalized petition or?
I think we may have a generic petition form, Mr. Chairman. But a petition is a petition if the signatures are accurate and represent the actual people, then we're not hung up on a specific form.
And just to reiterate, if we go forward and then the final prices come out and the people can't afford it, we can back off. I mean, Mr. Sullivan is well aware of how long we've been doing Partridge Hill Road. You know, we just need to do something. There is a Grand Canyon in it right now and we want to move forward. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Scott from seven St. Anthony Road. I have just a couple of questions. One, on a road that is deemed to be private, that is being taken care of by the town, where does the private road begin when there has been a significant amount of time for that road to have existed and then the extension happened? If you follow what I'm saying. So in the case of St. Anthony, when that development was done, St. Anthony kind of takes a turn off of Raymond and it only went for a very short period of time with two houses on it. Then the developer, who owned the property down, wound up finishing that road. And there's another question I have along that line. But my point being is that road existed as a private road, but was kept up by the town. Then that road then gets extended by the developer. The developer then is supposed to do, from my understanding, to meet town requirements, a base coat and a top coat on that particular, on any road deemed to need for, deemed necessary for the selling of a lot. Am I correct in that?
I would defer to the planner, he's here, but I do not believe a developer is required to put a base coat and a top coat in order to sell a lot.
Okay, that was a question that I had, I did not know. But I would like to look into that to see. Because if that's the case, then that's why our road is deteriorating. Because he only put down one coat, a base coat on top of that.
Which is generally what they do because they bring equipment in after, they dig cellar holes and?
This was done after he sold the property and did all that. He put that base coat on and then he went belly up. So that, this was one of the instances that wound up happening that you referred to, Mr. Johnson, as a developer who just did not, was not able to finish. All right, and I'm not gonna disparage who it was, but that's the situation, okay? So that's my question being, where does that road that has existed since the development has been there and has been upkept and it was deemed a private road? I know that the area of that road, of that development was at one point in time private and then they got it made public. Was that extension part of that public? That's the question that I have in terms of, let's research this. Because I agree that we shouldn't be here arguing our individual cases. That's for a different point. But I think the point being is that we all have certain circumstances, as you alluded to in your paper, that they're all special circumstances, they're not unique. One size does not fit all. But I do, would hope that we would have an opportunity to discuss these particular instances and get them- instances and get them, for lack of better word, adjudicated.
So, Mr. Chairman, I can, here's where we, this is why we're here tonight. On one hand, you want to help people on a private road fill a pothole, cut brush, that sort of thing. On the other hand, there's an argument that the town's been maintaining the road if you go ahead and do that. So this is the balancing act we face. I still, the reason that I'm trying to be so basic, and go back to the starting point of all of this, is to find out, before we argue the fine points, let's figure out if there's enough people on that road that want to go forward and pursue the betterment. Then we can start, we can loop in the highway superintendent, the planner, and so forth. The only thing we know for certain is that there's public roads have to be voted at town meeting, and meet after having met certain requirements. So it doesn't become a public road by virtue of the fact that it may have had a pothole fixed by the town at one point, or the, or snowplows turned around on it. There's a very specific process that's drawn out, so I think Mrs. Simzak had a very good point. Let's start at the, let's start where we need to start, which is, are there enough people on that road to want to go ahead and pursue a betterment? And then we can go through the fine points.
Yeah.
And answer all the gentleman's question.
Agreed, but I want to say it again, though, all right? We have an opportunity here with everybody here, if they have questions, you know, let's get, if we get some of them out up front, everybody will have the same base set of questions. It's going to take, it takes five to seven times for something to really sink in, no matter what you're talking about to people, right? So I want to make sure every, do you guys all feel heard, like we're listening, for the most part? I want to make sure you guys are like, at least, not stating your individual cases, but understanding, we know why we're here. We know why we're here. But, you know, it's to see the intersection between, here's the betterment bylaw, here's the individual case, and then, to Mr. Ruder's point, here's what we want to, how many people can we get on your road to start the process? Right?
I think the case that anybody has, whether, whatever case they have, all they really want to do is they want to wind up being heard. They want some type of discussion that happens. And when there's no discussion, then mistrust happens. And I think that's what you, as a selectman, need to make sure happens, is that these individual cases wind up being heard. Because here's the thing, we move into a town, we enjoy living here in this town. Been here for fifteen years, okay? I enjoy, I lived in a small town growing up. I enjoy the aspect. But I also understand that in a small town, you know, we have a responsibility to take care of one another. And I think that's where we, as citizens of the town, want that to be heard, in some type of form. And I understand about your betterment, I understand that you want fifty percent people to, I don't know if I can get fifty percent, because I got an absentee landlord who lives, who has a property, who wants to develop it across the road and can't. So he doesn't care. So those types of things are issues. Now, with St. Anthony, are those two houses up on the top, are they still considered part of that private road? So that's another consideration. How are they going to view, when they don't have any skin in the game? They don't need anything to betterment their road, because it's already better? That's the issues that I think we want to be heard on.
Understood.
Okay. Thank you.
But in his specific example, Mr. Chair, Steve, you should be able to go to the town clerk and ask her, when was St. Anthony accepted? Because if, I'm not sure, but I believe you're correct, a portion of it is accepted. So those folks may have frontage on the part that's already accepted. So you're right, they wouldn't have any skin in the game, because it's, they're already all set. And again, I defer to the planning board. Just because St. Anthony was extended, it was made private with a base coat, as long as they met the requirements at the time, to be, a building permit issued, the building permit would be issued. But, and then again, the developer bellies up, walks away, people left with the rubble, and we're left with the rubble.
Right.
You know? So, in your situation, it'd be easy to find where the, like Mrs. Coakley, nine hundred feet or so of Partridge Hill is already accepted by the town. We know that. And the other part, they, at the time, they must have met the conditions to be, have a building permit issued, which was never under this board's purview. But we're highway commissioners, so we.
So if I wanted to find out what the parameters were for the issuing of that building permit, and what the town wanted that developer to do as a condition, I would then need to go to?
Building Department.
Building Department.
But to find out where the accepted portion of St. Anthony ends, the town clerk should have that record.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, sorry, Pat, yeah, Pat was up, I'm sorry. Then you started, sorry about that.
I apologize in advance, because I am going to address our individual situation, because really, it's the only opportunity we get, okay? I did send you guys an email back in September, and I didn't hear anything back, and I had like a long history of Partridge Hill Road, but I'll keep this short. You know the history of Partridge Hill Road, and it's not the first time I've come before you regarding it. For over forty years, the town has not held the Derschmidt family accountable for shirking their responsibilities with this road. Now, the town would like to assess the residents, who have absolutely no culpability in this situation, a betterment fee for repair of Partridge Hill Road. Now, I understand you guys weren't here, because in my view, this should have been resolved in the seventies, eighties, nineties, early two thousands, okay? Everyone on the road wants it fixed, but to vote to assess ourselves a fee is pitting neighbor against neighbor, because there is disagreement on this situation. The residents of this road have been paying our property taxes at the same rate as everyone else in town. We've been contributing to the upkeep of every road in Dudley, with the exception of our own. And that doesn't seem right. I think the town and the Derschmidt family need to work this out amongst themselves, as they are the culpable parties. We know who the owner is of Partridge Hill Road. We know who the developer was, and he was never held accountable, and now you're coming back to the residents, and you want us to be monetarily responsible for what the developer didn't do, and I don't think that's right. That's all I'll say. I just wanted to make my statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Good evening. John Ross Moniz, 7 Eisenhower Drive. I'm kind of piggybacking off of what she was just saying. I believe I've, and I've lived in Dudley my entire life, I'm forty years old, so I grew up in this town, and, you know, I still live in this town, and I'm raising my family. And, you know, I built my house on Eisenhower when it was being built back in '03, so I've been there the entire time. So, you know, myself and all my neighbors included, we're kind of, you know, we kind of see that we're paying the same amount of taxes as everybody else in town, and we're not getting any of the benefits of the town. Okay? The builder, at the time, you know, pays for a plow guy to plow our road. When he doesn't show up, I plow the road. Okay? So we're not getting any plowing done, we're not getting any sanding done. You know, the last couple of winters, you know, it's been more ice than snow, so, you know, I got my Ford pickup truck, won't even make it up the hill with the plow. And, you know, again, going back to the safety of the neighboring neighbors, you know, there are elderly people that live on our street, and there are children as well, and I just think as far as public safety goes, that it's very dangerous, you know? And, you know, we just kind of feel like we were just left in the dust. You know, our builder, I'm sure you all know who it was, was at one time the building inspector for this town, and I believe he was in that hole while our development on Eisenhower was still being constructed. So I don't know if that was his loophole, to try to, you know, sneak everything through, because there was many things that I know for a fact, talking to Selectman Jermaine when he was on the board years ago, that there was many things that was deemed to be done on that road that never came to fruition, whether it was street lighting, whether it was a catch drain that was down at the bottom that needed a major repair, top coat on the road itself, you know, bushes, so on and so forth. I mean, the list is endless. I mean, I know I've spoken many times, I've come to the actual selectman's office to speak on behalf of this, simply because of the fact that I just felt that it was never coming to the forefront. And, you know, myself and, you know, my neighbors included, just kind of feel like, you know, we're there, and we're just there. You know, I know some of the roads that, you know, we're talking before, we definitely deem the private road, you know, definition, because, you know, we're not getting anything from the town. I know some of these roads are being plowed by the town, or salted by the town. We're not. We're not getting any of those. You know, I've even spoken to plow guys that I know firsthand, you know, and I've asked them, so if there's an emergency, and we've got three feet of snow out in the front, what happens? What if an ambulance needs to get down there? Oh, well, we have to call the town truck to come down and plow the road. So somebody could be dying of cardiac arrest, and I got to wait for the truck to come to plow the road? Just doesn't seem, you know, safe for the public. So going based off of what you said earlier, Chairman, about public safety, I think that's very, you know, utmost.
Agreed.
So, just wanted to thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joan. Appreciate it. Anybody else would like to speak? Couple more, Jerry, Tigger had a turn. Thanks.
Hi, Brett Brumby, 35 Partridge Hill Road. So I'm just trying to get my head around all this, because it's been going on for so long, but, so what I'm hearing with the betterment program is it's just, it's really just a door that we can open and start a process? And when we get to the actual terms that are on that betterment program, like, you know, if you can't pay within thirty days, you know, are all of those things negotiable once we get to, you know, once we get the ball rolling? Or is, once it starts in that realm, nothing can change? You know what I mean? Like, is this the only way in?
So, pay within thirty days, is that?
Well, on the back of it, you know, there's, basically, it's just the languaging of, on the last page of the sheet, where, you know, it can be assessed as a tax, and then on money borrowed, that whatever the town has charged interest on, then we would be charged two percent above whatever your interest rate is, on top of that, in our taxes, or however that comes across.
We could be, you could be charged, I think it says. It doesn't say you will be charged.
Right, well, this is what I want to understand, I mean, what, you know?
So the way it's formed out is that the total cost of the road is a portion among everybody who's, who lives on the road.
Right.
As long as it's fifty percent or more. And it goes over twenty-five, and it's split up and becomes part of your property tax over the course of twenty-five years, whether you live there for twenty-five years, or the next owner picks it up.
Right, it's part of that.
So, the terms of payoff are pretty, I mean, they're not, they're pretty reasonable. If you're splitting it, if you're splitting it among the residents of the road over the course of twenty-five years, it's pretty reasonable. And that two percent is in there, but it's not necessarily guaranteed that you're going to be charged the additional two percent.
Well, that's kind of what I want to understand, because if, like, the streets don't agree with the betterment plan, the way that it's written, and the way that we all understand it, then, then we don't get a door open to start a process going.
Unfortunately, that's the only path forward that we have right now. I mean, I think that, I think the benefit of this meeting tonight was, we heard, we have two ends of the spectrum. One suggesting up to blocking the road, the other, why, even though it's private, I pay taxes, why can't you fix the whole thing? That's the pendulum that we're dealing with. So there's got to be a path forward, a path to start.
Right, so if we get our signatures and get this ball rolling, then we can get to a point where we can discuss the actual.
Yes.
What the agreement really is going to wind up looking like.
Right.
Okay. Cool, that's it.
Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson?
And based on that, it sounds like you need a consensus of the owners of properties in that area.
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent. Therefore, that gets.
And that would be the ball rolling.
Yeah.
Thank you. Howie French, Partridge Hill Road. But that's fifty percent of, someone may have a vote, but they may have five hundred feet of frontage. Someone else may have a vote with a hundred foot of frontage. That five hundred foot of frontage counts as five times more votes than the other vote, correct?
Correct.
Correct, okay. And that's a minimum of two percent. So, when would we find out if it's going to be three percent or four percent? But I guess that's, once we get farther down into the process. You're not ready to determine that yet, correct?
It's a maximum of two percent.
It's a, it gives us the ability to add the additional two percent if necessary. We would find that out at the front end of the process. It wouldn't be a situation where it would be a bait and switch, and we jam you an extra four percent.
So, we talked about, everyone has a unique situation. Every road is different, right? So, we've talked about committees and so forth, but I, to me, a committee is too generalized. I think every road needs to be addressed independently. Because the only solution I've heard so far that the town is bringing to us is, you guys pay for it. The town's not accepting, really doing anything for us, other than saying, "Help us get out of this jam," because I think in a lot of cases, the town is responsible. So I know that when you get that deep into it, then you get into, okay, how do you force a town? Do you do it through litigation? You know, what are the, what are the next steps? So all we've heard so far, or all I've heard so far, is, hey, do you guys want to buy into this? Do you want to pay for it yourselves? Do you want to get us out of the jam? Because in a lot of these situations, I don't think these homeowners are responsible. So, if all of these roads, I think, need to be addressed individually, how do we go about doing that? What is the next step? Because, you know, we've had discussions for years, and we can even have a discussion like this, and it's still kind of vague. Everyone walks away, and it's kind of vague. Some people might want to do the betterment program, some may not, but the ones that don't want to do it still want a solution. And I think we ought to have defined steps. What is the next step? What are the other alternatives? Unless the town is saying, "This is it. This is all we will do." So maybe the town is willing to negotiate a little bit on a road-by-road basis. So if that's the case, I think we need to have, okay, this road, we can meet in this day, and it can just be the, I don't know anything about.
That's a good idea. Today, we're doing Partridge Hill Road, and then people come and talk about the stuff, the individual.
That's right.
I hear you. It's not a bad idea.
And I'm assuming all of these meetings have to be open to everybody. You can't just have a private meeting with Partridge Hill Road, correct?
No, it would.
Sure you could.
Well, we could, in theory, but why would we? It would give people the right to come and listen.
No, I think.
But then you want to focus on that street.
Yeah, but I mean, they would understand that. We're discussing Partridge Hill, and if they live on X road, I'm not going to say a road, they can, they can come, they can sit, and they can listen, but we're going to be restricting our discussion to Partridge Hill, for example, if that's even allowable. But, you know, part of your issue too, Mr. French, Mr. Chair, if I may.
I had Mr. Sullivan.
As a town, not just this board, I mean, it could be five different selectmen, the town is restricted by law how to expend funds on roads that aren't accepted. So we say private, I mean, there's the changeable terms in a way, but they're not. If the road is not accepted by the town, by town meeting, we can say, yep, accept Partridge Hill now. Town meeting, say no. Engineer can say no. So we're restricted by law how we can expend funds to do any kind of repair, improvement, any kind of work. And that's why, again, Michelle can probably find the, or the town clerk can find the vote. We have light maintenance, you know, like the trimming of the brush we were talking about, things like that fall under what you're allowed to do.
That aside.
You're talking about the process.
That aside, if somebody is responsible for how we got into this mess, somebody, you could throw all of this in front of a judge and say, "Who is responsible?" And if that's what the next steps have to be, I think, from what I see, that's what these residents have to decide. Residents, you either pay for it, or you force the town to do something.
I'm, I'm.
That's how I see it.
Yeah.
And I'm just speaking for myself, I'm just getting this out there, because I think all this is really, hey, what do you think about this? You guys want to pay for it?
I mean, you have LLCs that people fund, there's people here that run businesses in town, I'm sure they have LLCs, and they can bankrupt their LLC, and the obligation falls back to that bond. back to that bond, performance bond. I know we're getting off the beaten path, but...
Am I responsible for that road being in the state it's in?
Oh, am I?
Not you personally.
Right.
Is the town in Dudley?
Uh...
But let's see. That's what it's going to, that's, we're not going to decide that here.
I know.
I know that. Right? I don't want to even get into that discussion, but I just want my chance to speak. But the big thing is, I think we need to, road by road, we need to talk about it. Now, can, can we do compromises? Can there be something where, I don't care if our road's private or not, until someone gets hurt, right? And then that's when we'll really, things are gonna, we'll get a real legal understanding of things. But can roads at least be, hey, we do this little bit of repair, just because if we do this repair, then we'll continue to plow. And that's what, I think, like, on our road, I think that's a big thing. People just want to know the road's going to be plowed. And if we have, we have potholes now that are 12 feet by 3 feet by that deep, where homeowners have put stakes in the ground with caution tape. And right to the left of that, you've got another big rut. So you have about a width, this, so is the town going to come and say at some point, you know, "We're not plowing anymore because we're going to rip that up or we're going to do damage with the plow." So do we have these individual meetings so we can make compromises to satisfy everybody? Anyways, that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. French.
Excellent.
All right, Jerry, come on back up.
I've got a question, but before I do, I'd just like to address what he was saying. I think there is more than one path here that's being offered the people who live on these unaccepted roads, and that is to just petition the town meeting to have your road accepted, no matter what condition it's in or anything. So it's, the planning board doesn't petition the town meeting to do it, if I, my understanding, until it's met certain criteria, you know, the sidewalks, the second coat that we're talking about. And then the planning board petitions the town meeting to accept the road. But any citizen can even petition to have a dirt road accepted by the town if they so wish. There's nothing that says that, that I know of, that says that they can't do that. So, and once they do that, then the town has to maintain it. So I think that's the second path that hasn't been talked about here tonight. And I also, to answer this question, I think that until a road has been accepted, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, I think the state says that you are not allowed to fix potholes, even if you wanted to. So all you can do is plow and sand. It's all you're allowed to do on a private road. And you can only do that if you do all the private roads in town. You can't cherry pick which ones you're going to do and not do. So I think the, you know, the other option that this gentleman has is to just petition the town meeting to have his road accepted. But the reason I asked to come back up, and I thank you for allowing me to do that, is I'm reading this bylaw and it does, it doesn't, I just don't see any place where it says that the purpose is to have the road accepted by the town. It sounds to me like the purpose is just to do permanent repairs on private ways and roads. So like, and I bring this up because there's, there's two things that I don't understand. What if we get 60% of the people on my road, you know, linear, that say they want to do this, we go through the process, the town fixes the road, and then you start, you do all the work, and then it goes to town meeting. Is that to be accepted after the work has been done? When does it go to town meeting? After the work's been completed, I imagine. I mean, that's how, that's how the planning board does it.
Bring it up to code, right?
Right.
Right? So what if the town meeting says, "No, we don't want to accept that road?"
Then I think, and Mr. Frank, and I thought about this, he does bring up a good point. I remember dealing with this in the past where somewhere a vote was, it was A, B, C, D, and there was no reason for it to not be accepted. I think there could be some pushback that if you meet, this is why, if you meet the criteria to be accepted as a public way under what we can really have in our bylaws, and you meet that criteria and it's voted "No," there is a mechanism, there is a legal mechanism to still have it accepted. If you do it by petition, the moderator will just simply say, "This is out of order. It doesn't meet the criteria." You can't, you know, in order to force something to become accepted as a public way that doesn't meet the criteria in the bylaws, that's as simple as the moderator banging the gavel and saying it's out of order. And that would be...
So what if, what if on my road, and I'm not trying to be specific to my road here, this is for everybody to understand, what if we go through this process and we get the town meeting and either the moderator says, "You're not really, it's really, you know, Kruger Island Road is only 10 feet wide. We're not, that doesn't meet the criteria for accepting the road." Or the town meeting says, "We don't want to accept it," and it's not accepted for one reason or another. Then, then, then what happens? Are we still charged for the betterment? And then we have a road that the town's still not going to maintain because the next time there's a pothole in it, you can't fix it after we've paid all this money? If it's not accepted by the town, you can't maintain it. You can't cut the bushes. If one homeowner isn't taking care of the, you know, the bushes on the side of the road, it's just going to grow in and then the town can't plow or they have no place to put it. So that's my first, my first question. If, I'm not sure that you, I'm not looking for an answer right now, but it seems like...
Mr. Chairman, I can answer right now.
Okay.
I think that's what we deal with with a lot of things with town meeting. It's completely at the will of the people. If they vote "No," they vote "No." If it's legitimate and you've got a highway superintendent and a police chief and a planner standing up saying they meet every single criteria A through Z to have this accepted as a public road, there's a way to get past that. If they meet every single criteria and it's voted "No," there's a way to get past that.
But for Kruger Island Road, it's not going to meet the criteria, no matter what, unless you put the road through people's living room. I mean, it's so small.
Yeah.
But if it was laid out and accepted and approved, whatever, whatever year, like Mr. Schimshack said, subdivision control laws, everything changed. If, if the width was acceptable at the time, I would think...
So there's a guarantee that if we go through this process, the town will accept the road?
No, there's no guarantee.
Well, he's saying yes.
There's no guarantee that the town meeting will...
Right, town meeting, no guarantee.
...say yes to it. But if you meet the criteria, there is a mechanism where you can appeal something like that. I've...
And when the appeal? Is it definite, I'm just asking, is it definite that the final, if we go through these steps, that the road becomes accepted by the town, regardless of what town meeting says, then? Are you guaranteeing that or not? I'm just asking.
Well, I can't get, we had votes against adjourned at the last couple of town meetings. There were people saying, "No, let's not adjourn." And we were done with all the business. So I can't absolutely guarantee it because the town meeting has...
Okay. So then my second question is, is pertains to my road, and I'm sure it's true on a lot of roads, is that some people want to do this and some people don't. Now, I know there's one gentleman on my road, and the road goes through his property, and he doesn't want to do this betterment thing. But let's say that 75% of the people say, "Let's go with it." We decide to go with it, and the road that goes through his property now is going to be accepted by the town. Is there, is this a taking by the town? Is he going to be compensated for the land that the town takes from him?
This sounds kind of legally and above us.
Well, that's important on, for my road, that we know this before we go ahead, because that, that is...
That's part of the reason why we say, "Get the group together and we'll start..."
Okay.
And Jerry, my, I've been 20 years elected official. You've been around a lot longer. I don't recall a road ever that was deemed acceptable by the highway superintendent, the town engineer, planning, selectmen. We all have to walk it and we get a report. There's never been a road that was constructed to acceptable standards that has not been accepted at town meeting.
Yeah, that's through subdivision stuff, but we're talking, I'm talking about, those roads, I understand what you're talking about. I'm talking about the, you know, we're talking about the dirt roads that have been there for 30 years. Those I've never seen accepted by the town. That's total, that's, it's a different thing. And that's, that's my road and Kruger Island Road. That's the ones I, I'm just asking because these are, it's very different from the subdivisions which everybody's been talking about. It was never, it was never intended to be a town-accepted road, and probably a lot of people don't want it to be town-accepted. And so it's going to be, we're going to need to answer all these questions to convince everybody to do it, whether they want to do it or not. So...
Right. But that's, that's something, as Jonathan said, this is like a 2,000-foot view. We just want to put the process out there. Every road's different. We understand that. You're talking with your neighbor, you know, I like to, in your situation, I like to have the neighbor put a pen to the pencil and say, "Nope, nothing to do with it. I don't care if the rest of the guys vote for it." And then we'd have to deal with how we make it work. And your situation is you lay that out.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Jeff?
So I think most of the roads that we're talking about that are private, still private roads or not publicly accepted roads, were all, all came about in the same way. They went in front of the planning board. There's already a process in place where that, you know, it's clearly defined that those, those roads or those plans were accepted to develop that area. The developer came in and did that and then didn't fill the requirements to then lay the road out, go through the process of having it accepted by the town. So I think the, pretty much the same process has to be followed to do that now. So the logical way to do that would be to have, you know, a citizen petition. First, there has to be some interest. So you get 50% of the property owners on those, on those roadways. They then come to the, back to the planning board, or they find out through that process what the requirements were at that time when the, when the, the street was originally planned. So obviously, you know, zoning, taking requirements, depending upon the year that it was done, or, you know, whatever the bylaw or subdivision control agreements were at that time are going to differ. So they, you know, you would go back to the same, the same standard that was in effect at that time. Bring the road up to that standard, put it in front of the planning board, which would be the logical way to do that. And then after the work was done, if that's the way it proceeds, it would then be sent forward for layout to the, the planning board, I mean, to the, the selectmen as it ordinarily would, and then to the, the town meeting. And again, there always is a risk that the, the town meeting doesn't, doesn't approve, but, you know, we could research that further to see if there's some other legal way to, to drive that through, if it's, as long as they've met all of the requirements to have it laid out as a public way, or to meet the town bylaw.
Thanks, Jeff. Okay. This was a great discussion, guys, to kick this off. I, I hope everybody who came, I thank everybody for founding Informative. There'll be, you know, more, more to come on this. Just remember, the first step is the petition, the roads. I love the suggestion about, you know, meeting specific for a given road to kind of go over the intricacies and complexities of each road so we could, you know, create a plan, right? I mean, the town, I mean, as long as I'm here, you know, I, I'm, I will work with the residents to make sure that, you know, they can, you know, get as far as they can on this process. So thank you all for that. Mrs. Coakley, one more, one more?
I just have a follow-up question. A previous speaker brought up maybe having a committee set up. How would we be notified if that does move forward?
We, we can send out via letters again like we did with the other ones. That's usually the easiest to reach people. Not everybody's on the website.
And I realize that's not...
But Mr. Chairman, don't wait for a committee. If there's 50% or more...
Yeah, the 50%, go ahead and do it. If you guys collect them, just come to us and we'll, we'll, we'll kick that, kick that off. Right.
Yeah, I, I thought one of the speakers said maybe just have a general. No, did I miss?
Well, she, that was Mrs. Schimshack's suggestion. But like you said, it's one, one size, to Mr. French's point, one size doesn't fit all, so...
Oh, yeah, absolutely, doesn't...
So we want, like, your road, you know, is different than his, right?
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. All right. Item seven, board member comments. Kerry?
It's my turn? Oh, jeez, and he's not here. I was going to, no, he is here. I was going to congratulate the fire chief on getting his master's degree. Congratulations, chief. All right. And this is what I get. That's all I got. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson?
I'll just wait till, wait till the sidebar stops.
There you go.
Go ahead. You know, just to reiterate what I said before, there has to be a path forward that meets both townspeople and town and to come up with a way to solve these problems. So and then, to me, you know, you know, that's, that's just one part of it then is the prevention from happening, from having these issues happening in the future. And I think that's, tighter controls by, by several boards, including ours, most likely. So we need to figure that, that path because it's not just, you know, you don't want the, the board, you know, Sully might still be on a board in 20 years, but the, you know, the rest of us probably won't be here. But there should be, they shouldn't be dealing with the same issue of lack of controls. We need to figure that out.
Leave the board a better place.
Yep, agreed. Well said, Mr. Johnson.
Well, solve a problem and then you shut off the problem, right? Doesn't happen again. Other things might happen.
Yep. Well said. I mean, like I said, the sins of the fathers don't, not necessarily the sins of the son, right? So we have a chance to, you know, keep this stuff like, you know, contained going forward. So I get it. And I, I enjoyed this discussion today just here. I just, very few opportunities for people to come in and actually, you know, say, "This is, this is my problem." So, and, you know, we've put a lot of work into, Jonathan spearheaded this bylaw years ago. It's there. Now it's like something that we can actually apply. So it's good. But that's all I have. Departments, chief? Anything? Weiner, I write the line.
Left to right.
Right to left, sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. Spectrum one was out a few days ago, and they brought a good point about Wednesday evening. So this is a, I think a lot of the bars and everything else were closed last year, pre-Thanksgiving. So it's just a good opportunity to remind people to make sure that you're, you know, being responsible and safe out there. It's because it should be a very busy night. I'm sure everybody traveling back and colleges being in session and everything else like that, everything on a break. So take it easy on Wednesday evening. Thanksgiving morning, you have the, the turkey trot taking place. So we'll have some road closures in that area just between about maybe 8:00, 9:00 AM, probably for about an hour. The football game, I guess, it's our student representative is going to tell us after, has moved up to Wednesday evening out of Tantascra. So there's not going to be any impact that day. But I'm sure people will be going to other places or maybe they're heading over to Barlet or something like that. There's a, I put out my article last week and we were having some issues with our Facebook page. I think we finally had to re-up a new page. So I think we got that kind of straightened out. So people can look for that. But there was an article on the 3G services shutdown. So for folks, the mobile phones, the 3G service is going to be shut down in the coming year. So we're just asking people to contact their, their service providers for their cell phones to make sure that their, at least their phone is accurate and up to, up to snuff with everything like that. So older phones might be shut down. You might not be able to dial 911. So it's something that people can really look into and check on. Finally, this Friday, our department's going to work with the fire department and drive Santa and his helpers around between starting at 4 until Barlet about 7 o'clock or the, give or take, depending on whatever time it gets done. The route's been revised a little bit. So online, there are maps and the street listings of where it's going to go. It's going to kick off down off of, on Lower School, if they'll have Perryville Estates and work its way all around to the different neighborhoods in town. So if you want to look on our, look on our website, DudleyPolice.com, we have a listing of the maps and the street listings on there. And also call our department if you have questions about your individual area. We can try to give you some estimates or do anything like that. But hopefully, it'll be a good time. And we hope the weather cooperates. Any questions?
Thank you, chief. That's fantastic.
Thank you much.
Thank you. Dean? I'll use your names next time.
We don't have a choice anymore. We have to get up every meeting now. The hazmat program ended early because it was, it's so well-received, but we ran out of funding. So we cut it short early. I'm assuming that got put on social media. It was a great program. It was, again, it was well-received. I got a lot of positive comments. We will try to do it again if we can get funding for it, which we will at some point. I just want to remind everybody that it was funded through that donation from the Lions Club this past time. So thank you to them again. The other thing, we conducted some training on Saturday. We had an outside agency come in. It was called Man vs. Machine. It was well-received. It's teaching us how to do things like remove rings from people's fingers, get people that are impaled on fences and construction sites off. are impaled on fences and construction sites off, get people's appendages out of meat grinders and things like that, like industrial-type accidents. So we had a classroom session and a practical session that went really well, and using simple hand tools and some battery-operated household tools, actually worked better than some firefighting tools in those instances, so... That went well, and that's all I have, unless you have anything for me.
Thanks, chief. Appreciate it. Jeff? Anything else?
So we, just recently, at the end of last week, finished up the last of the seasonal paving on Bakersfield Road, about 3,000 feet of roadway, and we did a couple of, of other areas around town on Dudley Southbridge and Raymond Ave. Also, we're bringing in the road salt for the season, snow and ice control. There's about a 30% increase in the cost of the road salt this year, so that's, that's pretty considerable, taking into consideration the amount that we can expect to use. Hopefully, hopefully we don't have the kind of winter, or the, the weather patterns like we had over the summer. And we're out doing regular, regular routine maintenance on the roadways, and preparing for the winter season with, preparing the equipment for that.
Thanks, Jeff. Rich? Anything? And then George. See, Rich, he didn't get called up last this time, how about that?
I appreciate that. Good evening. I have a few items, like to hit a few of the larger points. I appreciate everybody's patience with me. We went through and had a tax, tax rate classification hearing. Excellent. One of the points that I wanted to move forward, not in front of the larger crowd, but for the board's consideration, in 2019, you had a debt-excluded amount of $1,987, which moved your tax rate up. $750,000, $760,000 worth of debt has been retired since then, and it hasn't been replaced. So you're starting to see, a brief economics lesson here, that we should be adding to this so we could do more with a similar dollar amount, not necessarily less. I only make mention of that is, we had the opportunity in 19 to add something to the tune $578,000 on there, replace it, to buy more with the same, and this building is going to be done in 2024, which is going to be another $400,000. $975,000 is a lot of money, so for your consideration, we should be planning our next project today so that we could debt exclude it, and sort of keep that tax rate similar. I know, I understand the rates are going up, but our ability to keep things similar by the same dollar is something we should be looking at on a regular basis. I could talk for two hours on this. I appreciate the time, and I'd like to keep that in, in, ahead of the retirement of the debt. Speaking of retirement, and I rehearsed this all night, December 1st, 5 to 7, we're going to have attorney Michael Sacco from the Worcester Regional Retirement System. There's a few people who want to join Selectman Sullivan, and put their feet up and, and rest in their, their later years. We want to go through, this is informational, so if you're going to retire in six months, a year, two years, it's probably worth your while to go here. Even if you're going to retire in five years, you've at least heard it the first time, and you should be planning towards an approximate retirement time. Certain things you should be doing. Also, it never hurts to know where you're at. There's a lot of things that are available from the Worcester Regional Retirement System for your planning. We're going to be borrowing money on December 1st, we're going to have a band sale for a 1215 settlement. I'll let everybody know how that is, it's usually pretty interesting. There's a definite difference between borrowing money in December towards the end of the calendar year, as opposed to the end of the fiscal year, in June sometime. Everybody saw that we had our tax titles in the Webster Times. One thing of note, $44,500, give or take, went into tax title. The previous year, we're probably doubled that. We had 45 parcels, normally it's 70, 75. So for whatever reason, we're getting more activity, getting things paid off before December 31st of the year after in which something was assessed. And I know it sounds long and complicated, but when Standard and Poor's goes and takes a look at these things, that's one of the metrics, that's one of the data points that they're looking at. Okay? So we had our levy that Lisa discussed, and there's a smaller amount that remains outstanding. That's a good thing. That's going to be just about it. Water bills due December 15th. Happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
Thank you, Rich. George?
Good evening. Just a couple of things. Right now, we've just finished up our lead-in copper sampling, which is primarily up in the Eagle Drive in Cardinal Heights areas. We thank the people for doing it again, and again, and again. State required, we have no choice, we have to do it. They've been cooperative so far, so we appreciate that, and there'll be another round coming up, another couple of months to follow that. Hydrant flushing is still out there, it's, 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 right now, we've been trying to do it in sections because of our situation with the pump stations. I'd say we're probably about three-quarters of the way done, all zones right now. Have you noticed it's station number three on Schofield Ave, quite a lot of activity? That's the new treatment vessel for the PFAS, that is going to arrive probably around December 6, 6 timeframe. So we hope to get that in operation as soon as it, as soon as it arrives. I want to thank the highway superintendent, his guys, for the paving help over at the sewer station, paid a large amount of the driveway, so now we can put the trucks in the garage without any fanfare there. Right now, our blending operation is status quo, and it's, one more round is coming back to us, I haven't received it yet, we're expecting it to be about the same. So we should be able to pull everything off, and get the treatment center, the, the, part of the temporary treatment vessel in, in place, and operational, and we should be ready to go. So we'll be in good shape. That's all I got.
Thank you, George. Anything from the constable slash FAA slash CAP back there?
Oh, what about...
I know, I'm just, as a department head. But I'd like to really go to the student representative.
Um, okay, so we have our annual Powderpuff game being played tomorrow at 6:30 at Shepherd Hill, and our Thanksgiving football game has been moved to Wednesday, November 24th, at 5:30, being played at Tantascwa. And that's all I have.
Oh, that's, didn't, so that's, so it's, it's an away game, and it's not on Thanksgiving this year?
Is there a reason it was moved?
Tantascwa, Tantascwa wanted to move it.
They wanted to move it?
Yeah, since '73, every year, at Thanksgiving morning at 10:15. All right. Let's make the, Mr. Chairman, let's make the Powderpuff game the thing now.
There you go.
What is that? That's actually a good...
That's actually a good idea. People like to go somewhere on Thanksgiving morning, so tell us again about it, and where, where and when is it?
Um, it's tomorrow, 10:30.
It's at, on the football field?
Yes.
All right.
I'll be there.
All right. There you go, under the lights. Thank you, Abby. All right. Number 10, Mr. Sigandarich.
What are we doing?
Convene us into executive session?
Hold on, my, my packet went into sleep mode.
Read that one.
How are the packets working out so far?
Fantastic. You separated them.
Except for when you don't, you gotta keep jiggling it for it to work, but it's fine. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we convene into executive session under MGL Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation with non-union personnel, or to conduct collective bargaining sessions, or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and not to reconvene into open session.
Motion by Mr. Sigandarich?
Second.
Second by Mr. Johnson. Roll call, we have the roll call, roll call vote.
Kerry Sigandarich.
Jay Johnson.
Steven Sullivan.
Tom R.C.I. Unanimous. Thank you, everybody, good night.